I'll call the Public Works Meeting Order. Let the take your note, the same people present, and any motion to approve of minutes April 8, 2010.
I'll make a little second.
Questions, changes, anything on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, Report and Recognition Award, the Engineer Contract to S C E S E C Group for North Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades. These people are here today again. As you've seen in your packet, the proposal. So you want to make this brief in, or you have a presentation, or Gary, you're taking the lead on this, or?
I can give a little introduction to this. If you recall, a couple of committee meetings ago, S E C Group was asked to come back with a proposal for looking at what we called at that time Alternate 2.5. Alternate 2 being the expansion of the North Wastewater Treatment Plant, and Alternate 5 being the upgrade and renovation and modernization of the plant, but with no increase in capacity. What you see before you in your packet is a proposal from S E C Group to do preliminary engineering on both of those two alternatives. The fee for this preliminary engineering, which I think would get 30% design, is $800,000. We have Ed Coggan and Mark Hardy from S E C Group here to answer any questions that you have on it. And Ed, did you want to give any presentation?
Just wanted to go over one quick graphic that was included in the packet. Kind of explains the contract form that was presented. And what's currently written in the base contract, included in the scope of work to be completed under this, would be this preliminary design phase with a fee of $800,000 for that.
Could you hold on one minute? Hang on. One minute. Dave, could you go back to the memo that was written to the council about staff support Alternative 2B, but has the following concerns about Alternative 5-5? Before we get into this, staff did have some concerns about Alternative 5 that we need to discuss.
I will touch on staff's concerns, and Ed can elaborate on any of those. I got these from Brad Kittleson, our Treatment Plant Manager. Some of our concerns with Alternative 5, does not provide the nutrient removal, which is anticipated as a future EPA requirement. Does not provide UV disinfection, which is seen as the long-term solution to problems with chlorine disinfection, if you'll recall that, been talked about in the past. Does not solve the current problems with excess flow treatment, which as I understand it is the biggest or most immediate problem they face over at North Plant. Does not provide automation throughout the plant, but only for those processes which will receive an upgrade. Again, this is a concern of our Treatment Plant Operator. Does not address the future potential problems of South Plant being required to provide nutrient removal treatment. If you'll remember in our discussions about expanding North Plant, we could then decrease the rating of South Plant so that it's no, so that it's a minor discharger, and then it would not fall into the regulations, the future regulations for nutrient removal. If we leave South Plant the way it is, as I understand it, they could be subject to the same nutrient removal requirements in the future as North Plant, and there's really no room on South Plant to do the kind of expansion to accommodate that. So we see that, you know, again, as a potential problem. So none of those are addressed by doing Alternative 5, which again is the upgrade and modernization, but no increase in capacity.
Okay.
No, that's a very good summation of the recommendations from a feasibility study report, that the draft will be ready next week on that, is to, Alternative B2 was our recommended alternative from there. Alternative 5 was included at the request of the council, but that's not our recommended alternative or approach for the plant expansion and the anticipated lower discharge limits.
Okay. Mr. Nunezio?
I think when, the way I understood when we did the motion was that we were going to design B2 full expansion, and I understand the part about 5 came up, and once it was designed, we were thinking we might only do 5-plus tertiary filters and all this other stuff that, you know, you guys explained, phosphorus, nitrogen. And that's when we put it out to bid, that's when we make the decision of what we're going to bid at that point. And in the case that it needed to get the full expansion, where we needed the extra capacity, then, then we would, you know, I understand it might cost a little more if you do it in two phases, but that was my understanding. We were going to design 2B right from the get-go. Now I'm looking at 2, I don't know, I'd like to make a motion, design 2B, if I'm, let me see if I got the numbers right, at cost of $1,919,000.
The cost for taking Alternative B2 to complete design?
Yeah.
Would be what's currently presented in the contract as the base contract. Then we list supplemental services that are not in the base scope of work, but that could be, so we could get this information in front of the council to discuss it. The supplemental service for Option 1 would be to take Alternative B2 all the way out to final completion within the timeframe that we were discussing. And the total cost for that would be the $800,000 for the preliminary design, and then the $1,119,000 for the final. That brings it to a total of $1,999,000.
$19,000. $800,000 plus $1,119 would be $1,919,000.
You're correct. $1,119,000.
That's the way I understood it when we passed it the last time. I'll make that motion. If maybe I, maybe I misunderstood, I will stand corrected tonight if that's the case.
That is correct. We also presented two other alternatives to comply with the request for, you know, the point, the Alternative 5, and those are included for information also. But the recommendation from the feasibility study is just what you described, bringing this one out to final completion for that price.
So there's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the discussion, on the motion. And we have any comments?
The mayor does.
Mayor?
Just so I understand it, then, you want to use taxpayers' money to design a plant now for a town of 44,900? You think that that's realistic?
Well, Mayor, I believe the solution here is, if we don't, I'm going by staff recommendation, 2B, half of the EPA stuff that's coming down the line, we won't be appliance to do.
It's not what I'm discussing. Talking about increasing the capacity.
Yeah, I'm looking at the future of this town for Thorndale Corridor.
So realistically, you believe we're going to go to a population of 44,900?
During the day, I think we will, with all the hotels in it.
Well, during the day, we're currently at 30,000, and the plant can handle that.
Yeah, but not adding the hotels and everything else, Mayor.
So, just so I understand, you want the current taxpayers to pay for the possible future economic development of the Thorndale Corridor?
All we're saying is take it to design phase and design the building, and no one says we have to build it.
At the cost of the current taxpayers, rather than the future developers of the Thorndale Corridor?
But it's in the budget for CIP for a million. It's, that design is in the CIP project. The design is...
That doesn't make it right.
What I'm just saying, Mayor, if we sit back and, in my opinion, and I did have a lot of consideration there, my opinion with this, we need to do something. We cannot move forward with any grant money, and we haven't committed to a design. I thought the motion was, last time, go off for design. Design 1, 2B, and then look at when we designing is not add all of 2B in there, but upgrade those treatments.
But that's not the motion Alderman Police just made, as I understand it, because that, the 1.9 figure includes design for the plant for 3.47 MGD. Not just laying it out on a survey where these things would plug in, but the actual design and engineering of the full-size plant, unless I'm mistaken.
Mr. Nunezio?
I asked this question at the meeting the last time. I said, if we designed the plant, do we have to expand it? When the time comes, you're telling me it's two years before, you know, all this work gets done and whatnot. I know I task has been doing theirs for, before I got on the council, and they're just putting it, they just put the shovel into the ground, so I don't know how fast this is going to happen. But providing what the economy is, and the mayor is correct, we do not need this extra... Basically, I think it's 3.2 right now, right? The treatment, North Treatment Plant's at 3.2. So we're only increasing the North Treatment Plant a quarter percent? Is that a quarter, what was it, 3.2 and 1.1 on the South Plant? And now we're pushing, we're pushing the South Plant under 1 and bringing up North Plant to 3.47, if I recall.
The North Plant is currently permitted for 1.97, and so we're recommending an increase of roughly 1 and 1/2 MGD up to 3.47.
So right now, we're at, but right now, we're basically, with the two plants, we're at $3 million?
Correct. South Plant is permitted for in excess of about 1.3.
So basically, we're going to go up to extra half, half million?
We're going to add 1.2 MGD capacity to your total...
To the one plant, but reducing the other one.
To your total capacity. We're adding 1 and 1/2 to North, and we're subtracting from South.
Wait, wait, 1.97 and 1.1, that's basically a little over 3, right? And now, what's it going to be, so the North is going to be 3.7, I mean, 3.4 plus 9?
And then South will be at .96, yeah, oh, about 1.
So it'll be at 4.4. So we're really raising 1.2 million gallons.
Our total capacity would be 4.47, roughly 4.5 MGD would be your total capacity with the recommendations from the feasibility study. And that's the capacity requirement that was included based on the CMAP population projections and the Thorndale Corridor projections that were presented by the Lakota Group for that redevelopment. That was the capacity for there. It also includes a reserved capacity of 25% for beyond the 2030 time period. If additional expansion, you know, growth occurs, you have the capacity for that.
Right, but if we design the plant, the full expansion does not have to be done, correct?
Correct. One of the things that we've included in our design, and it's kind of spelled out in our scope of work, especially at the 30% level, we're looking at all of the items on Alternative 5, which would just give us the upgrade to North, plus the expansion. And it's also with some slight modifications to what we were originally recommending on locating a few things. It will be a, it could be a first phase of completing the ultimate expansion. There wouldn't have, there'd be minimal reuse or, you know, services that wouldn't be carried on with a future expansion. Also, the final design that we could do for the Alternative B2 would include bid alternatives that you could determine if you wanted to take out some of the unit processes and not build them at this time. That was discussed at the last meeting of how that could be arranged. Because some of the main items that are the difference between the two alternatives, I can show you on the site plans very quickly here. This is Alternative B2 that includes the new raw water lift station, excess flow facility, the digester upgrades, and then the secondary treatment expansion, and the digesters, and the disinfection with the filters and the UV. Alternative 5 doesn't include the new raw water pump station and excess flow facility. It keeps using the old one. It doesn't include all the digester expansion that we included here, and it only includes one of the three new clarifiers. And then it doesn't include the filter and disinfection at the bottom. So, but all of these components are part of this.
Okay. All right, you got...
Thank you. So what you just described, the preliminary work on that, is that the 1.9 million, or is it the 800,000?
The 800,000 would be the preliminary design work to complete B2, everything, and would also identify the items that we currently have as Alternative 5. And based on additional staff input, Alternative 5 may want to change when we get to the time of our preliminary design workshop. Because the schedule on this is out here. We're looking at six months to complete this preliminary design, and then a review period by the city that will include a detailed workshop on everything that's in there, and a phasing recommendation for looking at alternatives, you know, if you wanted to upgrade the plant without adding the capacity, or upgrade some of the components now, and evaluation of the cost that you would incur if you were to do it in phases as opposed to all at once. So a lot of that decision would be made at this time. The design cost for completing, the design of B2 is what we have here. If we add in some phasing items where we have to design kind of parallel construction paths, instead of building just B2 all the way to the end, if we have to, you know, add in the raw water pump station upgrades for the existing, or revise site plan for the site utilities if it's going to change from a phasing approach, those drawings would be added to the design set so that the contractors could bid on something and have some bid alternates, so you could evaluate that at that time.
In the middle section there, right, that gold area is when that would happen?
The review would occur here, and those decisions would be made at this time. And then we would define what project we would finish out. If we finish out B2 to completion at this one, you know, we have the cost for it. If we wanted to just do Alternative 5 at that point, those costs are here. It's the additional $415,000 to take that to final design. We're not recommending that be done at this time, but really looking at part of this a phasing approach. This last option that we have here was to comply with the request of looking at designing both Alternative 5 and Alternative B2. That request was made at the last meeting. So we had both those in here, and the costs reflect, well, this one plus this one, you know, being the design work on those.
So it, I think I'm understanding, you know, in the preliminary design, the 800,000 is what you need direction on tonight. Is that correct?
That was the staff's recommendation on how to present this.
Okay.
So that was, you know, the, several approaches we made. We could contract for the full amount, notice proceed to complete this part, and then at this, if we want to modify the notice proceed to include a different task, you know, something other than just this design, or just this one, you know, that would be possible at that time. The form of the contract that you have in your packet is, this is the base contract. These are supplemental services that could be provided. And then the cost for providing those, we scoped them out to look at the labor effort required to comply, complete those items. This one, originally, we had a one-month review period in here. If it was just selecting and going over the preliminary design, we, in this case, we made it two months, because if it's going to go, the preliminary design workshop, and then go back for committee and board, it's going to take more than a one-month period. Our design time, the 16-month design time that we had agreed to before included a one-month review period here. When we bumped this out to two months, it actually extended our project out to a 17-month period here. But this duration's going to be the same, this period, if it lengthens or shortens, would be reflected accordingly.
So as my last follow-up, what's, then what's in the contract is spelling out the costs and such for those four sections, and then the first preliminary design is, we're saying go. And then the final designs, it is where you, you're going to need to come back and just say, should I do this, in other words, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, then I, I would definitely support this contract. Thank you.
Mr. Nunezio, please.
Ed, bottom line, first part, we understand we've got to do them for all. Then you're looking at the difference between the full B2 and Alternative 5. Basically, I don't know, it doesn't sound like everybody's excited about number 5. Sounds like we do want to move on with the filters and whatnot. So the difference between 5 and B2 is not that 700,000 number that you said is a difference. The number's going to be less because we're still going to have to engineer for the nitrogen removal, phosphorus removal, whatever. Right?
Didn't quite understand.
Because, because Alternative 5 does not have any of that stuff.
That is correct.
So we have to engineer that stuff in there?
At some point, you will have to.
Okay. All right. That's all you have to say.
And regarding the capacity increase, the majority of the costs of this project are really associated with the increased removal efficiency of the system, more so than the capacity increase itself. And that's, when we looked at the different alternatives previously, we had an Alternative 4 that was presented that included the BNR, or the biological nutrient removal capacity with no increase in flow capacity. And the construction cost for that was very similar to the construction cost for B2. But there were a couple items that were left out as far as the excess flow facility and raw water pump station from that alternative.
I want to, can I make a comment? Basically, we get something in our packets. This came from another engineering firm talking about concern gas chlorine, something about primary agency to designate any chemical substances as a substance of concern and designate the threshold level for the contaminant for the vulnerability assessment. And then it says, the chemical causing most concern is gas chlorine. If regulators determine that a facility using chlorine is one of the two top high risks tiers, the bill gives them the authority to order utility to change its disinfectant chemicals. So I say, we do the B2, $1,919,000. I'll stay with the motion.
Wait, 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 shall we have a second?
This, this conversation, this discussion, that reminds me of the last one we had, and I, I thought we, it became clear at the last meeting that the additional dollars between what at the time was an imaginary Option 5, which is tonight a reality of an Option 5, and this B2, a bulk of that cost difference was not the expansion or the, or the growth. It was, as Nunezio Police is saying, it was, it was to meet these additional requirements that are very likely going to, are going to come at us. I feel strongly that we need to design for that. And you know what? If we're ready to break ground in 24 months or whatever, and those have not become a reality, I think you've shown a great way how you can have designed B2, but you may only have to build Option 5, if I'm using the right nomenclatures here. That's why I second it, and that's why I support Alderman Police's theory. I'm convinced that somewhere along the way, throughout the lifespan of this, of this plant, that's going to be necessary, and I think that it's going to be sooner rather than later. But I just want to make it clear to everybody that that cost difference is not all about expansion. Only a portion of it is. It's about meeting these additional requirements that the professionals sitting in front of us are fairly well convinced we're going to see. That's why I support it. And if I said anything wrong, please correct me, because I want to learn. I want to make sure that, you know, this is, this is a huge deal for the city. I don't want to go on information that I may have formulated my mind as incorrect.
That is a correct statement what you just made.
Okay. Any other questions? Mayor Johnson?
Would you clarify for the council, just so we all understand, the effects this is going to have on the Veterans Memorial? I think right now, you'd have to give me the grassy area, what do we have, 75 or 100 feet, the plant is away from it, versus now with Plant B2. What you're showing there is a, how much closer is it getting the clarifier and that building and that fence to the Veterans Memorial?
The clarifier's going to be approximately 60 feet from Memorial. It'll be in that depressional area that is located to the east, where there's a few pine trees in there and, and lawn. On the, to the north, it's going to be no closer than the, the walkway in front of the existent office, existing office building. The office building's going to be expanded to the east. And then the secondary building here will be in there too. It'll be a little closer than where it is now, approximately, well, from the existing aeration tank, we're at about 60 feet closer.
And then the dotted line is what?
This is, would be a fence, moving the existing perimeter fence from where it currently is up to enclose the entire plant. We have to have a perimeter fence for security around the plant.
And the fence would be how close to the memorial, the actual brick side of the memorial?
It's roughly about 30 feet.
Alvin Roy, I mean, on the chart. Do you have a...
I still have difficulty with putting those big domes on Irving Park Road. I, there's, there should be an alternative to something like that. You can see what they look like on Prospect and I task up before, and now we're going to have that on Irving Park Road? I don't know what the alternative is, but I can't vote for something that is going to be, we're trying to beautify the city, and we're going to have that concrete dome or fiberglass dome, or whatever it is, sticking out right by the memorial.
But I believe that those domes aren't that big, that they impress them into the ground. Am I, am I correct? They don't stick out, like, guys?
You're not going to hide them, believe me. They're too big.
The tops of them will be visible. We're recommending for the fence that's put in there, that's when we did the presentation previously on it.
On Evergreens.
There's, that can be landscaping and fence to hide that as much as you can. But from a tall vehicle on Irving Park, you would still be able to see the tops of the domes. The, one other alternative that was presented for the membrane bioreactor system that did not use the clarifiers, but the cost was considerably more than this one.
Alvin Roy Wesley?
How much is, how much was in the CIP? I don't have it with me.
Hi, Nunezio, could you answer that question, since you brought your book, please?
I don't have the exact page. I know Brad showed it to us. But as far as this year's budget, and this would be over two years anyways, at the ending of this year's budget, we're supposed to have $2.4 million, $2.4 million ending cash balance. Actually, it's even higher now that we cut some projects out, but that's, that's totally for something else anyways. But the ending balance, if all projects were in, was $2.4 million.
How much is in there for this project?
I think that was in, I think it was in the unfunded category.
No, was it? No.
No.
Brad showed it to us before the meeting.
Or was five years out?
I believe so.
Here it is.
Well, can I go to my second question?
Go, go to your second question.
2.3 million. Right here. 2.3 million was in there.
For this year, or for next year?
It was going out a couple of years.
Right. Basically, you're moving the numbers over. So if you spend, you spend them here, you're not going to spend them here, of course.
So 2013?
2, 2.3 million was in that CIP. Some coincidences.
Okay. The idea of doing this is to get, try to get grants, correct? The design. If we did the design for, for alternative five, does that mean we can't, we can, for, I'm sorry, for B2, does that mean we can't go get grants for the sewer treatment plant?
Yeah, we can get grants. Got you. Answer that question.
Just clarification on that is?
My, my point is, with the Thorndale Corridor, it goes along with the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway, is when. No one knows when. We don't know where the funding's coming from for the Thorndale Corridor. I don't think the Thorndale Corridor is going to happen unless the Elgin-O'Hare happens, but we don't know when, who's going to fund it or anything else. So my point is, how do we go about, my question is, how do we go about getting, saying we want to build a new treatment plant? Where's the fine line of saying that we could qualify for grants?
Any plan expansion that you are, you know, proposing to do, or plant upgrade or improvements, can qualify for different grants and loan and funding alternatives, whether or not it's required for, for growth, additional expansion. If you are providing additional expansion for some, you know, economic improvements in the area, some other grants do become available. And by providing this capacity, you would be able to pursue those, particularly, you know, the EDI, Economic Development Initiatives that's, are funded through HUD at a federal level. Those can be done as legislative earmarks for, for projects that would allow for, you know, economic improvements to occur in an area. There's some other ones for economic developments, Economic Development Administration, they have a Public Works Assistance Program. But that one is really for economically stressed areas, lower income, similar to the CDBG grants that are available. Again, your LMI, low to moderate income levels have to be at a certain percentage to be able to qualify for those. But there are some, you know, some of the HUD, you know, grants earmarks are, that are available, you know, can be for that. There's also the STAG grants that can be, and they're additional, you know, legislative earmarks are funded through the US EPA. Those are other ones that we can go after and pursue. Once we have a plant design and know what we're, you know, presenting them with, here's the project, here's the cost, here's what it gets us, you know, do we qualify for it?
So any of these plans, there's grants available?
Yes, there are. You know, there's funding and sources out there. They're not guarantees. There, some of them are a little bit competitive, but we've got a group that does grant writing and, you know, funding assistance on a regular basis, and particularly the ones that require federal earmarks. And we've been successful in a number of communities for getting them funding for those.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of building a new plant here, but in return, we don't know the Thorndale Corridor, if it's, when it's going to happen. And so on that point, I feel like that we should do it a minimum, get some money in because I think the, after, if the Thorndale Corridor does come in, that money will flow in a lot faster for us to expand that. So if we need to do it at that time.
Alman Winger.
Thank you. Mr. Graff, in your write-up on April 16 that we're looking at here, the five bulleted items that are not, I believe they're not included in alternative five, are they included in alternative 2B? So to rephrase it as well, is this saying that you're concerned about five because these five items are not included? However, they are included in 2B?
All of those items are included in 2B.
Okay. So I think you're saying, if you do alternative five, you're not going to be doing these five bulleted items, but they are in 2B? And this contract here accounts for 2B and five eventually. We're going to have our regroup session, the two-month, and we would decide doing five, 2B, or a combination. Is that correct? In the scope of work that we're looking at?
Well, are we talking about the $800,000 scope of work?
Yes.
Yeah, under the 800,000, that was preliminary engineering for both five and 2B.
And then in the contract, the pricing and scope of work is also defined for five and 2B, but we're going to decide six months down the road about that. Is that correct?
Right. We would do the preliminary, then take that break, two months or whatever it turns out to be, to decide on the next step.
Okay. Okay. So I think I'm, I think I'm still okay with this, and it looks good to me. Thanks.
Alman Kadal.
I think the mayor's questions were alluding to a concern, and Alderman Shockey stated it much more clearly. And it's a concern that I've discussed with both the mayor and Alderman Shockey, and I share it. I don't like that we have these constrictions which are putting these structures that close to Irving, that close to the memorial park, and are going to be obvious from the street. And Alderman Shockey's right, we're, we're going through efforts to try to beautify the town, and we don't, we don't want to look at these. But nobody in this room can give us another alternative. I mean, SEC has, and it's the membrane solution, which is more costly and it doesn't have a proven track record yet. I'm not saying it's inefficient or it has problems. It hasn't been around long enough for me to feel comfortable spending, approving to spend that much more money on it. Nobody can tell me where we've got other land that we can make this work. So I got a set of parameters, very, very specific, very well-defined, that I and everybody else up here has to, has to use and plug all the, all the variables into, you know, to try to make a decision. So until anybody here can tell me how we can expand this plant physically to other land, or where else it can be located, and how much that's going to cost, and anything else that's going to alleviate these aesthetic concerns, because I think anybody that ever watches me speak knows I'm very concerned about the aesthetics of this town, no solutions are, have been presented so far. And I don't imagine that any other engineering consultant would have been able to alleviate these concerns. We've only got so much land. We're, we're not so much looking for the capacity as we are these, you know, these five items in Mr. Graff's write-up here. So I think, I still think that there are things that can be done. I asked a question before, I think I still need an answer. Can these, do these domes have to be white or blue? Can they be green so they can camouflage in better with an evergreen wall? How far depressed can they be? What is the final elevation of the top of these domes over the crown of the center of Irving Park Road? I think I did get that answer at once, and it was fairly low, like six or seven feet by the time you made the depression. Bottom line is, I think there's, there's ways to conceal this, and I don't like them there, and I don't like that we've got to jump through hoops to hide these things. And a 30-foot span between that pavement and that first dome is somewhat problematic to me. But a bigger problem is not meeting future IEP requirements and not being able to expand if and when the Thorndale Corridor is completed, you know, with the Elgin-O'Hare line and any other, and any other growth that we may see in the city. So if the consensus is to approve the initial portion of this for the preliminary study, I can go along with it. But I certainly hope that we remember everything that we've talked about ad nauseam now in six months and realize that going forward with Plan Five is, is a huge, huge mistake. Thank you.
Alman Nunezio, please.
When we were talking about moving the plant to Edison Road, I remember hearing numbers just for the conveyance of 15 to 20 million dollars, if I remember right. So I think the plan's fine right there.
Alman Joe Coles.
The only piece of property that was there was the one along the Eisenhower Expressway. That was, and that was, just to build a plant, was 80 million dollars. And that didn't include the piping that came to it. So, I mean, you, this is what a brand-new plant would cost, approximately 80 million dollars. So, and that's the only piece of property that the forest preserve would give us for the second plant that's in Oak Meadows Golf Course. And that's what, that was all engineered and everything. And part of it was in wetlands. So I just want to let you know that I was on that committee, and that's how much it costs. I realize sewer plants are very, very expensive. And I, I don't know what to do myself.
Mayor Johnson.
I just want to remind the council, without getting too specific, there is an alternate site available that doesn't require piping off-site and is not in the floodplain, should we decide to pursue it. But I do want to question, go a different direction with this. What we're talking about is 2B, 37,778,000. In your experience, what's the maximum grant that you've gotten in DuPage County?
I don't believe SEC has gotten a grant in DuPage County for one. I'll have to check with Mark Holm.
All right. How about Northern District of Illinois? What's the maximum grant as a percentage of the project that you've gotten in this area, Chicago region?
I'm going to have to ask Mark Holm that question. He'll be more experienced with that, and he wasn't able to attend tonight.
All right. How about in any of your projects, what's the maximum grant you've gotten? So what's the bottom line to the taxpayers is where I'm going with this?
Well, there's, I've been involved in several projects where we've done a STAG grant, where it's a 55-45 split is, is one example of grant money that we've obtained.
Which, 45 grant or 55?
It'd be 55 grant, 45 match.
So we're talking about, what's the net expense to the taxpayers then? 12, 15 million?
Yeah, 15 to 17 million.
And then the net effect to the residents to pay for this, since this is an enterprise fund?
Yeah, if a STAG grant at that level is obtained, that would be the range, yes.
No, I'm getting to what's the increase in the bill, the sewer bill? If we go with 2B?
Mayor, I understand where you're going here, but the point is, we do nothing?
No, but I think this-
I mean, because eventually the taxpayers might have to pay for something.
Or a future developer of the Thorndale Corridor.
Well, you can't think that that's going to happen there.
Well, actually, I do believe it's going to happen. So assuming we don't have that development, what is the net effect to the taxpayer on their sewer bill?
It depends on how you want to structure the, the fee structure.
I think we were talking about a loan, 2% interest, 20 million dollars is what I heard in the preliminary discussions.
Well-
I think the calculation was 40 dollars a month is where I'm going with this, to the resident.
That's if you make a linear, a linear calculation and spread it equally among all of the ratepayers. But as you know, we charge commercial different than we charge industrial, than we charge the residential. And you can structure your rate structure so as to put more of a burden upon higher volume users, commercial, industrial, whatever. So it's, I'm not sure you could just take it linearly across the board and say, "Everybody's going to pay 40 dollars." It depends on how you structure your, your rate schedule to make that work. If you want to subsidize the residents at the expense of industrial and commercial users, you certainly can do that because to some extent, you're doing that right now with respect to our differing sewer rates.
Alman Kadal.
I'm coming up with very different numbers. 15 million dollars over a 30-year lifespan, so divided by 30 years, divided by 12 months per year, divided by, if we're only going across residential users, not even considering the others, I'm getting something more like 3 dollars a month. I may be way off on that, but.
You want to give me that calculation at 3,424 single-family and duplex units?
Pardon me?
There's 3,424 single-family and duplex units.
I'm using 14,000 residents. I'm using 3 dollars a resident.
So that would be 9,000 a month, times 12, 90,000, so about 100,000. How do you, how do you retire a 20 million dollar debt plus 2% interest? So it's a 28 million dollar total debt at 3 dollars per month increase.
We said the debt was 15 million.
Well, preliminary, the previous month, they were talking about 20 million at 2%.
I can't do math if you keep changing the numbers on me, mayor.
Alman Roy Wesley.
You know, my impression of your company, I'm not trying to criticize, but I thought you guys were more familiar with grants and stuff. And now I'm thinking twice here because you just named only one, and you have nothing in Du, you never had anything in DuPage County.
Like I said, our project team has quite a bit of experience in DuPage County. Mark Holm, who's got the most experience and knowledge of, you know, projects in this county, wasn't available. I'm sorry, yeah, Mark Holm. He was at a, his daughter's recital this evening. He wasn't able to attend. But there's been numerous projects also that, in McKinney County, a smaller wastewater plant in Rich, or in Johnsburg, our STAG grant paid about 60% on that one, and that was a 3 million dollar project. And we've gotten continued annual STAG contributions for additional work there. It was another one that's been funded through that program.
Within how many years are you talking though?
That one was first built in 2003, and the additional work has been since then. This was to construct a complete sewer system and sewer plant for an unsewered community. And we've got a, you know, a financing team and financial assistance team that are the experts in that. I'm a wastewater engineer and not a, an accountant, so I wish I could help you a little bit more on that information. But we can get the right team members in front of you who can give you all of that information.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm going to call the roll. I mean, I think we answered all the questions here that everyone, let's call the roll on the motion.